We welcome everyone to this work session of the Huntsville City Council on this date, February 19th, 2017. We have one item tonight, and that is to consider the electric rate action proposal. And we have staff from Huntsville Utilities here tonight to brief us on that proposal. Mr. Owens, we will turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Robson, and Huntsville Utilities thanks you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We have, I've got about 12 or 13 slides that I would like to review with you, and then we'd like to respond, excuse me, to some of the questions that the council had for us from last week. First I'd like to do is a little rate history from 2000 to present. Back in '02, the council approved a 5.5% rate increase impacting availability and demand in energy charges, and then it was $1.33 that was added to our availability, and which brought your availability up to $5. In '11, the council approved another local rate adjustment for us, and it was 3.5% across everything with $3.11 increase to availability. Back in April, we were here with the council, and we made a proposal of, actually, it was two increases. One was $2.50, and one was $2.40 strictly to availability. And the council asked us to go back and look at some alternatives and come back to you. What we heard from the council was that any rate increase should be spread across all rate classes. The increase should be both on availability charge and on the energy charge. Considerations should be given to impacts on low and fixed income ratepayers, and they asked us to retain the two tiers that we have in our rate structure, which we did. What we're proposing to you tonight is basically a 2.75% rate increase across everything, across availability, the energy increase, it'll be on residential, general services, commercial, industrial, and outdoor lighting customers. The basic impact on the average residential customer will be 29 cents increase on the availability, and it'll be, which will take it from $8.88 to $9.17. The rate increase on energy is actually .24 cents per kilowatt hour on that tier from 0 to 1400 kilowatt hours, and then it's .26 cent increase per kilowatt on everything above 1400 kilowatt hours. This chart, the yellow on this chart, the 1496, that's our average residential customer, 1496 kilowatt hours. Currently, the bill is $145.58. With the proposed increase, the 2.75% increase, it would take it to $149, excuse me, $149, that's bad, $149.57, which represents a $3.99 increase. And you can see the other, depending on the usage, and you can see the impact of the proposed rate increase. Why is a rate increase needed? We have, electric system is foundational to your community, and we have a lot of operation and maintenance experience that we, that I feel like that we've somewhat neglected over the last few years. We need an increase so that we can improve and increase our operation and maintenance on the system, continue with our capital projects, and continue expanding our infrastructure through the electric system. Of course, all our funding for capital projects, operation and maintenance of the system comes from sales revenue. Current sales revenue is obviously dependent upon customer use, customer behavior, and it's somewhat weather-dependent. Supplies and material costs, we're not immune to the increases that everyone experiences with those. We've just got a couple of items on this chart that gives you an idea of some of the more typical things that we use in electric operations. Say a concrete pole, we've seen about a 7.3% increase in pole cost. Cable cost is about 13%. Say a bucket truck, almost a 20% increase in bucket trucks. Substation transformers, almost a 30% increase. In fact, we bought a transformer a month or so ago for a delivery point, and I think it was a little over $500,000. So, cost of materials and supplies that we use every day continue to go up. You take the things like the pole cost, we have over 100,000 poles in our electric system, and, you know, we do pole changeouts, pole replacements, and things like that every day. Something, kind of a metric that we keep up with, just to kind of compare us with some other systems and that type thing, this gives you one. Our operation maintenance cost per average customer is averaging about $255 a customer, and it averages about $9 per thousand kilowatt. So, you can see how we compare to some of the other systems in the TVA system. And this is something that, to be honest with you, we kind of talk out of both sides of our mouth. This is something we're kind of proud of, but it also tells us, too, that we should, we really, there's some things in the system that we need to be doing that we're not. Some distribution automation-type stuff, and telemetry, and controls, and monitoring of the system that we need to be doing. Another thing that we experience is the two pictures there that was taken, I don't know, a couple or three weeks ago, I think it was on a Tuesday night, we had some weather through the area out on 72 East and up in Ryland Pike, had some tornado damage. And on this particular event, we had, I think we had about 30 poles that were taken out. And so, this particular event cost us a little over $300,000 in materials and supply, and labor, manpower, overtime, things like that to recover from the storm. But we had the system back up, and like I said, we had over 30 poles down, but we had the system back up in about 18 hours. But things like that happen, and that's part of our operation and maintenance cost. Yeah. Okay. This just gives you a little idea on our electric revenues. I apologize if we got an issue there with the PowerPoint, but on our electric sales revenues, 85% of every dollar that we take in, approximately 85% of every dollar we take in goes back to TVA. That 15%, that's our margin, that's what we operate, the electric system off of, operation and maintenance, capital projects, and things of that nature. We just went ahead and put the other two up there, our water and gas. Of course, our water system, 100% of the revenue that we generate, you know, through the water system goes back into the operation of the water system, and projects, and things of that nature. On gas, gas, about 38% of every dollar on gas actually goes to the commodity, for the purchase of the commodity. Give you a list of some of the items funded that we plan to fund, you know, with our rate increases, obviously some substation improvements. We have a little over 100 substations in the electric system, so maintenance and operation of those stations is something that we're continuously working on. Some that, Moon Town is a new station that's under construction. One southeast water plant is a delivery point that we'll be constructing off of TVA. Redstone Gateway, County Line, those are our new substations, a new substation for the Madison Hospital, Northwest and Sun Lake. Again, funding for our tree trimming, I know tree trimming is not very popular at times, but it tremendously enhances the reliability of our electric system. Distribution transformers, pole inspection and replacement, as I mentioned a while ago, we have over 100,000 poles in the system, and it's a continuous operation, you know, for pole changeouts and repair. And of course, general development and service extensions, infrastructure, construction, and things of that nature. This just gives you an idea of where we fall with some other utilities close to our size and in this area. This is for a 1,000-kilowatt-hour bill. Currently, it's $99. With our proposal, it would take it to 102. As you can see, Alabama Power, I would like to mention it. I think our graph hadn't been updated. Alabama Power, a couple of days ago, I think, got approval.
It's 130 now, but it's on the neck of the chart.
Oh, it is, okay. But actually, for 1,000 KW with Alabama Power, it's about 130. So, we're in good shape, you know, as how we're compared to other utilities in the area. This is just a timeline. Of course, back, we had, January 9th, we had a formal public hearing here in the council chambers, and then, of course, on the 12th, we were at the council meeting with the introduction of the resolution for a local rate adjustment. And then, of course, the work session tonight, and we'd like to have the resolution at the city council meeting on January 26th. If our proposal were approved, we would like to implement it in the billing February 1st. That concludes my slides and presentations. We've got, at the council meeting of the night, we had some questions, some specific questions that the council had asked of us, and we'd like to respond to those at this time.
So, I'm Ted Phillips, I'm the CFO at Huntsville Utilities, and so I'm going to, we're going to tag team on a few of these, but, so I believe it was Councilman Keith asked, what was the anticipated, our anticipation on further rate increases into the future? So, right now, we're anticipating that if we do get this rate increase that goes into effect February 1st, that we will probably be back asking for another rate increase in 18 to 24 months. So, part of that is based upon, so TVA has been and continues to change the way that they charge us for electricity. And so, we know that there are some changes coming from TVA and how they change that. So, back before 2011, there was a major change, and they went to what we call the energy and demand charge, where they charge us for the energy, so the number of kilowatt hours that is used by our system, and then also, we get charged for the peak demand every month. That was a brand-new way of charging, and the reason that TVA did that, that they were the one assuming all the risks based upon customer usage and weather. But we see them tweaking over the past few years their rates, and now they're talking about having a, for lack of a better word, an availability charge that they're going to charge us as well. So, we will need to look at our rates, we may need a rate increase, we may need a rate adjustment, a different model than we currently have, but I don't know exactly what TVA's going to do. So, just to put it out there, we suspect that those changes will be coming in October of '17 and '18, and then after we know what they are, then we'll be able to know better how we want to move forward with that. Second question, I think, was from Councilman Kling, had asked about the fiber network construction, and was this rate increase going to be used for the fiber network construction? And the short answer to that is no. We've already funded that project, and we're currently working on that project, and we'll continue to work on that project over the next year, the next couple of, three years. But we have contracts with a tenant on our fiber network that, you know, we've made obligations to make sure that that's in, and so we went ahead and already have funded that project. So, the next question was on Energy Advocacy Groups, and I'm going to turn that over to Joe Gertis.
Good evening, and I believe it was Councilman Keith that asked the question about how we engage our friends in the Energy Advocacy, Energy Efficiency Groups. Some of them are here, our friend Daniel Tate from Energy Alabama, which is a group that we do stay in touch with, regularly attend their meetings when we know about them. But there's a number of other groups, I kind of took a little bit of an inventory today. Huntsville Utilities is an active member of the Southeast Energy Efficiency Alliance, and so through CIA, we are also engaged with the Association of Energy Services Professionals. We do, when Rucci was having regular meetings, we would go to the Nexus meetings. We rarely missed any of those. We're very engaged with the Energy Huntsville Group, that was a group that Mayor Battle put together a few years back. And with Energy Huntsville, Operation Green Team, and the Huntsville City Schools, we have been partnering on the Georgetown University Energy Prize Project. Good news there is, in the data portion of that competition, Huntsville has led every quarter for two years, and that data measurement period ended on December 31st. So, we look good to make a running to win that competition, and if the city wins that, that's a $5 million prize to the city from Georgetown University. Our discussions with the mayor's office and Operation Green Team, Joey McKee and Robin Cox, are that hopefully we can leverage some of that money into continuing some of the energy efficiency programs that we now do, namely, the HEM project, which is the Extreme Energy Makeover project, excuse me, and then maybe make some of our new homes program more robust, our home energy survey program. And then, we also have been engaging in some energy efficiency communications via our Facebook and YouTube channels. Pretty regularly, I think we've done 20 episodes now, and they're just basic, sort of do-it-yourself energy efficiency tips, really just utility efficiency tips, because we also cover some water issues there. We're engaged with the Smart Grid Consumer Collaborative through our industry groups, TVPPA, that's the Tennessee Valley Public Power Association, the American Public Power Association, and the Electric Cities of Alabama. We stay engaged with their educational efforts about energy-related topics. We're engaged with the DECA, the State Codes Board. We have the only construction program of a utility in Alabama that's energy code compliant. So, really, what we want you all to know is that is a space that we are engaged in. We're always looking for new opportunities to offer our customers opportunities to be more energy efficient and reduce their consumption, and therefore save money on their bills. And the next question is about compensation, and our Vice President of Human Resources, Janice Capshaw, will handle that one.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think this question came from Councilwoman Culver, so I just wanted to go over a high level of how we pay our employees and how the system works. All of our pay policies and structure have actually been set and approved by the boards, and they've been in place many years. And most of our, I would say, all of our pay is really based on merit and performance, the way they get their pay increases. I do want to clear the air about bonus systems. We have never had a bonus system in place at Huntsville Utilities, to my knowledge. I've been there almost nine years, and we've never given bonuses to any employees, so I do want to dispel that. Our compensation system, really, we try to track to make sure that we're competitive in the market, so we do a salary survey once a year on several jobs to make sure, are we paying what the other market pays those employees? We want to be competitive, and so we don't lose our employees. So, we actually survey other TVA utilities. We survey the city of Huntsville, we survey the Chamber of Commerce, and also the Tennessee Valley Public Power Association, the APPA, APGA, and AWWA. So, it's a pretty comprehensive survey to tell us what other people are paying people with similar jobs. Okay? We do have a cost of living increase that we look at once a year. It's usually based on what that salary survey tells us, as well as what the CPI is. So, we do give a cost of living increase, or look at that once a year. So, this past year, I think it was a 1%. Merit increases are based on performance, and we have an exempt schedule, it's a step system, and we have in that system, it is based on performance, and there's eight steps in that system, and it can take an employee up to 10 years to get topped out in those steps, because some of them are once a year, and some of them are every two years, and some are three years. And they are based on merit. So, we do performance appraisals, and if those employees do well in their performance appraisal, they'll get a step increase. We do have a number of people, 212, that are completely topped out. That means they don't get a merit increase every year, they would only get the cost of living increase. And if they're on discipline, or they have poor performance, even if they're in the step system, they would not get a step increase. And exempt employees are very similar, they don't have a step system, but we do have a merit performance system there as well. So, if an employee is there and they have good performance, once a year, they would be reviewed for a merit increase based on performance. We also have about 46 exempt employees that are talked about that do not get increases. So, we actually have about 40% of our employees that do not get a merit increase every year, but they do get a cost of living. So, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Let's wait until the end, we get everything, and then we'll open it up for questions. Thank you, Janice.
You're welcome.
Well, this certainly feels different. Councilman Keith asked about...
Would you just introduce yourself? Not that you need any introduction, but just for the folks watching at home...
I can give my address, too, I'd love to do that. I'm Donald Chevsky, I'm at Huntsville Utilities, I live on 11014 Everest Circle.
We're good, we're good.
My zip code is 35803. Councilman Keith asked, what can I do, or what can we do at Huntsville Utilities to discount or help out low-income folks on a 65-year-old salary, where it's not going to, you know, all the above, all the hard stuff? And the second paragraph pretty much answers that question, from a TVA perspective, for us to do it, which is we can't. So, I'll go there, go to the next chart, please. All right? So, I wanted to help you with this a little bit. Just use Alabama Power, but I could use other ones, but Alabama Power's the easy one, because we've been in this room where people think Alabama Power's cheaper than TVA, our prices are. And so, this is that chart we showed earlier where we didn't have the $6, but that $130.14 up on the chart, it was $123 on the other one, it's $130. That was effective a couple of weeks ago. So, that's where Alabama Power is. Alabama Power, because it's a profit, has the ability to do a, waive the $14.50 availability fee, you heard that, $14.50. Ours is $8.88, wanting to go to $9 something. $14.50 availability fee for low-income qualifying, that'd be very similar to what we do for HEM, you know, the $26,000 salaries. If you subtract the $14.50 off the $130, takes you to $115, it's still more expensive than what you're charged here with our availability fee. And so, we want to do more, so I'm going to go to the next chart. We have a tendency, what can we do? And Huntsville Utilities, I believe, is doing a lot, and I'll beat on that here in a minute, but I just wanted to share with you, only 2,055 folks actually put money into Project Share. That's actually half of what I got doing, the Roundup Program that we do for the Schools Foundation, where you round up to the nearest dollar on the bill, and we have over 5,000 folks that do that. I don't like either one of the numbers, I think the number ought to be 100,000 for both, and everybody gave a couple bucks, that life would be a whole lot easier, and Councilman Culver, your world, or you're on that board, would be very happy to hear that story as well. So, what I'm sharing with you, we are going to go to the next level on that. We did a competition for Roundup and doubled, and we doubled it just in our phone center by just offering up a $25 gift card. If you did this many, and we'd give them a $25 gift card. We're going to go after the same thing with Project Share. So, when they call in on the phone, would you be interested in joining Project Share? And we're going to hope that we do better than, we'll take $6.75, we'll take a dollar, but $6.75 is what the average donation is a month, and you can see, they can sign up, they can add it on, we prefer they just do it. Adding on causes us some more paperwork, but we'll do more paperwork. On Project Share, the Salvation Army actually screens those, and they do it in those months. And basically what we've, well, basically, we've done 100 families this past year, and the average grant's about 194. And now, you understand, Project Share isn't just about paying electric. I mean, it's electric, water, gas. We have a tendency to think, when we get our bill, we, we look at our bill, and we say, wow, we got a high power bill. Well, it's power, it's electric, it's water, it's gas, it's, we bill for sewage, we bill for trash pickup, I mean, the beat goes on. So, and most people that are constituents actually like getting the one bill with all of it on it, because it's easier than having to chase all down the stuff. So, over the past few years, we've done 1.7, but I'm going to take on a personal crusade to that number go up, because I had another chart that I'm not going to show unless you just want it. It's actually gone down in the last 10 years, the Project Share amount, okay? And the Project Share families has gone down, and I would argue that part of the reason it's going down is because they know they're not going to get anything. So, because, you know, there's only so many of them. Next chart, please. All right. I think this is the one that goes unnoticed. Councilman Culver, you're probably the most aware of this, because you're on this board that helps us with this, but I will share with you that we have one guy in our outfit that does nothing but, well, he does more than that, but his major portion of his job is deal with these 45 local agencies. One of the ones I keep referring to is Community Action Agency, and then you see the HAP, you see Protestant, but that's 45, that's churches all over. They'll have a customer come in looking for help, and they want the help, and then that agency will call our guy. And then, our guy met all the requirements, met all the statistics, and then our guy, we Huntsville Utilities pay that bill. And then, my guy chases down those agencies to get the money from them. So, that's a good news story, too. We're not waiting on anybody else, we are a team player, we're going to help these guys and gals and take care of business. Just so you know, that 2.5 million is just not Huntsville, that's Limestone and Huntsville. That agency, that customer assistance I'm talking about, is the one coming through Community Action Plan, that's 2.5, that's part of a bigger picture. Alabama's like 19 million, that's federal money, and our piece of that is 2.5, our piece, meaning Limestone and Madison County, that's our piece of that, and that's based on the number of low-income folks you have in your area. So, what I would share with you, I believe we are doing as best we can. Can we do more? I'm going on a campaign plan, but I don't want you to forget the HEM program, and we've beat that to death, but that was an investment that we accepted risk to do and put in, and we invested about $28,000 to help write a grant, professionally grant, with my smart guys, and help with Ted Phillips' smart guys, and we won 11.7 million. So, I'd say that's a pretty good return on our investment. And that's 1,100 homes, and the only complaint I have on it that I feel bad about, but I said to a gentleman the other night, if I, we can't use, we can't do it on a gas customer. So, I think you wouldn't be real happy with me if I said, well, we're just not going to put in for that grant, because we can't help gas, since we can't help gas, we're not going to help electric either. I don't think you would have wanted us to do that. So, we took care of a major population. My promise is, we're going to look at a way to help gas. This board, I got one of my board members here, Dr. Houston, who is our gas-water board, we are going to look at another approach, and it's, there's no free chicken around here, you still have to find money, but there's an ability for us to find some money, maybe 50 grand, maybe 40 grand, and do a few gas customers. I can't promise nothing, but I can promise that we're going to make an attempt to look outside the box, other than just electric. I think that's it. One more?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So, I'm back again, so I believe this was Councilman Keith again, so asked us what effect not passing this rate increase would have. So, we came to you in April and asked for a rate increase, and you asked us to go back. We had an opportunity this fall to do a refinancing on some of our electric debt, and so we went to the rating agencies to get a rating on that. I won't insult your intelligence, you all can read, but there are a couple of items that, let's go back to that first one, Joe. A couple of items I would like to point out, these are standard and pores analyst words, not ours, but, you know, they felt like that because you voted against the rate increase that we proposed back in April, that they didn't have confidence that we would be able to get a rate increase again here in the early part of 2017. I hope you're going to prove them wrong, but that's your decision, not mine. So, then there's a little bit more. You know, what... You know, one of the things that they said also was that, you know, the coverage ratios that we have right now does not line up with a AA+ rating. That was our ratings with Standard and Poor's was a AA+, which is one notch below the AAA level, which I know you all understand well because you've done such a good job with the city's general obligation bonds. And then, I think the one item that I would like to point out on this last slide is that the downside scenario. Should fixed cost coverage and liquidity fail to approximate forecast levels, negative rating action could follow. So, basically, we have put into our forecast, you know, approval of these rate increases. You know, we assume that when we're putting together our forecasting models. And so, we feel like that if we weren't able to get this rating, that we would possibly see another negative impact to our rating. So, I think that's where all the questions that we got from y'all at the last city council meeting, and we're here to answer any more questions.
Thank you all very much for your presentations. Councilmembers, what are your questions? I think, Mr. Keith, you had wanted to ask one earlier, so we'll start with you.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, young lady. I forgot your name, your last name. I didn't remember you, Ms. Capshaw? Yes. Just a quick question on the... because I know people that contact me. Does the board of gas, electric, water, do they set the proposed new salary for who your, you know, future president would be? Do they have any involvement in the proposed salary?
Yes, they do.
They do?
Yes.
And when it comes to setting the salary, I guess, an increase would argue that the more we... in your professional opinion, the higher the salary, we're looking for a much better candidate.
I would think so, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. No, not for her, I'm sorry. Joe, maybe you can answer this. Or maybe... I don't know who can answer it. This one is about the recommendations of the rate. So, the last time that you guys came to us, this was not an internal proposal. You guys went to a professional to find out the rate? Can you give me that process?
That's great. Ted would be more qualified. But generally, we use a rate consultant anytime we're looking to adjust our rates. So, if you want an in-depth explanation...
Absolutely. And let me just start with the preference that some people think that you just sit around in a room maybe and say, this is how much money we want to make, so...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, to explain the rate-setting process a little bit, so, we also, because TVA is our regulator, we have to have their approval before we can have any rate increase. And so, one of the things that they require of us is a cost-of-service study, which is what I think you're alluding to. So, we do have a consultant that we use to help us prepare that cost-of-service study. And then we prepare that and send that to TVA. And then, they will look at that, and, you know, they usually have questions for us as well. And we try to get those questions answered from them. And then, you know, we get their approval, and then we come to y'all to get your approval, to City Council, to get your approval. So, in a nutshell, that's how that works.
Absolutely. Thank you. And my last, because maybe you can answer it as well. Considering that you guys lost an A, how long would it take to recruit that A? And do you think that, in large part, having success of getting a 5-0 vote would help you get that next A back?
So, yeah. So, if you... can you go back a couple of slides? So, right there, that's the one. So, one of the reasons that we've talked about it being important to us to get that 5-0 vote, because not only was the line, its passage is uncertain, given the recent city council vote, but also, they noted that it was a 3-2 vote. So, they are looking at those types of things, the rating agencies, when they're reviewing our proposed debt issuances. So, I think a 5-0 vote sends a strong message to our rating agencies that we do have to support a city council.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Kling, I believe you had a question.
Mr. Russell, I want to go down the line?
You can go now. Just go ahead. I'll go next.
I'm looking out in the audience, and I know there's a lot... it looks like almost half of the people here are Huntsville Utility staff, and the public, I guess, is not hearing great numbers. What process did you go through to notify the public? Because we want them to be involved in the process, and we want to make every outreach possible, you know, to them on this process.
Yes, sir. Well, as the communications director and public relations guy, that falls a lot on me. And that was a criticism that we took back last spring. So, we began communicating it out via city council meetings in, I believe, late October, at the earliest. But in November, each time we stepped to the mic, we reminded the public that we would be coming to you with a proposal. We used social media to a great extent, and then, of course, we used our local media outlets. And thankfully, they all responded in kind by giving us a lot of coverage. We, of course, did the required legal notice, which is three notifications, but instead of only doing three, we did eight, as far as six weeks out from the first hour public meeting on the ninth. And all the way up until that meeting. And then, one of the things that we had never done before that we got pretty excited about is that we livestreamed our public meeting on the night via Facebook. And that was a very engaging experience. I think you all know Gary Whitley, and he was responsible for responding to the comments. And then, there were some other people that were responding to comments. We were just very excited about the engagement. But to answer your question, we went as far as we've ever gone or farther, and we will continue to look at ways to engage the public and make sure that they're clear on what our plans are going forward.
Thank you. Also, and I guess this is for Mr. Owens, kind of following up on what you had said about Google. Google is not part of this. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. Actually, I think Mr. Phillips responded to that question. But no, no, it's not. It's not part of the association with this rate increase.
Okay. The fiber, it's basically self-sustaining, understanding that you all are going to use some of it for your own...
Yes.
...business interest.
Yeah. I think the other night I mentioned it. Actually, we started looking. Actually, we got in the fiber business 16 years ago with our utility, using it for our SCADA system. And so, it got to a point where we need... operationally, we need some... with our outage management system and distribution automation, we need fiber throughout the electric system. We also need fiber for control in the water system, pump stations, tanks, things of that valves, regulators. Same with our gas system. So, it's been our plan and in our capital to build out a fiber system for us. So, in doing that, we found it could be more cost-effective if we overbuild the system and lease some of that fiber to other entities. Of course, electric, water, and gas will be using the fiber system. The city of Huntsville is going to utilize some of it, possibly the school system. Google is just another tenant on it, and it's a dark fiber lease. We're not in the content business or anything like that. It's... we're strictly leasing fiber.
Okay. And I guess I just want to restate and make sure I understand what, I believe I've been told, all of this proposed increase, if it's approved, it's going to go for the nuts and bolts of the utility operation, the things it takes to keep electricity flowing during ice storms, your vehicles, your cabling, your equipment that you have to do your job that's just gone up over the normal cost.
Yeah. Operation and maintenance of the electric system and our approved capital projects that we're in the process of doing.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Owens, could you introduce the board members that are present here today, tonight?
Let's see. We have Mr. Moore, George Moore is our electric board, Ronnie Bowles. Mr. Bowles is on our electric board. Dr. Houston is on our water and gas board. Did I miss anybody? I think...
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
What I want to talk about, you're still up, is the number of employees. Some citizens, very few, think maybe you've gotten fat over the years, and you've been hiring employees and doing things that other government agencies do and bureaucratic systems have been in place. I can remember asking the question before previous rate increase meetings, and I was always amazed at how you were able to control the number of employees you had from year to year. And I assume you've added employees because I know you've gotten a lot better at customer service and some of the things that people used to really complain about. I hardly ever get any complaints on Huntsville Utilities now. People's power gets put back in really fast. Their calls now get answered, and they seem to be happy with your services. Can you discuss, just in general, how many employees you've had, how many you've increased over the number of years, and are you going to keep increasing?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Russell. We currently have, and Janice, correct me, about 650 employees. And we were actually discussing that today. Was it '08? Oh, 2008, we actually had about 640 employees. And so, our employee workforce obviously is somewhat cyclic. We run three apprentice programs. And we have an apprentice program for electric, water, and gas. The electric program is four years. The water program is three, and gas is three. So, we'll staff up. Those classes are usually 15 or 20 employees each, and we will staff up, you know, with those employees as we run them through that three or four years for those apprentice programs and training and certifications and all that type of thing. In the electric department, linemen, the apprentice program is very structured. That's a dangerous business. Those guys are professionals. They don't learn it overnight. You know, it takes time to train them, to learn our system and all the safety that's associated with that. Water. Water requires certifications and all that kind of thing. You're dealing with the public health and these guys that operate these water plants and things of that nature. We've had to... so, we're actually got four, I think, four apprentice programs going now. We have a water-gas combined program running, a water program, a gas program, and an electric program. So, we've staffed... to answer your question, we've staffed up some for that. Also, we've added some additional staff because of the water treatment plant that's under construction down toward Gunnersville. That plant is... we'll have to have staff, you know, associated with it. We've added some staff associated with some of the conservation stuff that John talked about, the HEEM program and things. So, we have added some staff over the years. But what happened after '08, we went into somewhat of a hiring freeze because of the economy and some things like that. So, actually, when you look at the company as a whole, we haven't actually added a lot of staff. We're just really kind of getting back to where we were in '08. And something else that, please remember, we increase customers every year. You know, our water department's growing, our gas, we're trying to expand the gas system, and, of course, electric. Our service territory is Madison County, and it's 350,000 customers, 24/7. You know, everybody in this county is our customer. And our ability to respond, reliability of service, and things of that nature, we run around the clock. You know, basically, it's great, but we never close. And so, it takes a lot. It takes a lot of staff.
And off to the top of your head, can you discuss some efficiencies that you all have put in place or how you save money? Customers are asking me, don't raise our rates, you know, cut something?
Yeah. Well, we continuously look for ways to save money. The one that jumps out in front of me is we have an electric, is a load reduction program and that kind of thing, where we continuously... we've put equipment in place, where we continuously monitor load. And what I mean by that, that's the amount of energy that we're using or that we're actually buying from TVA. And we put the necessary things in place where we can control voltage and control the load, and by reducing that at peak times and things like that, it saves us a lot of money. In fact, you find it, Joe, we've got a... if I'm not mistaken, and I can't remember the date, but we've saved approximately $20 million with the load reduction program. And I can't, and I apologize. I want to say since... Mike, do you remember when we put load redu... '08 or '09, something like that? But this gives you... this particular chart is... it's November. Actually, it's from November of 2015. But we haven't looked at it yet, but I can promise you that December this past month is going to look just like this. And what this is, is it's showing every day of the month in November of 2015, and it's the amount of kilowatts that we actually are purchasing through our delivery points from TVA. So, as you can see, during the course of the month, we were averaging about 600,000. And then, all of a sudden, here on the 21st of November, the load jumps up to 850, 900,000 kilowatts, 900 meg. And so, we have to pay for that peak. TVA bills us on two things. They bill us on peak for that billing period, for the month, and they bill us for the amount of energy that we actually consume. By having that one peak like that, that one day, we pay all month for that 900,000 KW. And it's actually about $10. It's approximately $10 a KW. And so, what we do, we monitor this continuously, every month, winter, summer, every day, to try to reduce that peak. Because every KW that we reduce that peak, we reduce our bill to TVA by $10. And one way we do that is by reducing voltage through our regulator stations, at substations, and things like that. And so, when you ask for ways to save money, that is one thing that we implemented several years ago, and it's been very successful. We also utilize our facilities to do the same thing. Every KW that we can reduce that peak, it's $10, you know? And so, we use our water facilities. We use our water treatment plants. We use our pump stations. We pump water, fill tanks, off-peak hours, based on this. It's just one of the things that, you know, that we're able to do because we have all three of the utilities. There's some synergy associated with that. But transportation, we've got a large fleet in all three departments. Transportation cost is something that Ted and his team have been very aggressive. We're running our equipment a lot longer, not long enough that it's not reliable, but running our equipment, you know, as much as we can and things of that nature.
Thank you. And my question's now from Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips, you may remember, not too long ago, I read your financial report, and I was struck. I don't remember if it was this year or last year, that the electric system had lost approximately $2 million.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain that to the council and to the public, why that happened?
Sure. So, that was last year. In 2015, our year runs, just like your year does, starts on October 1st, ends on September 30th. So, for the year ended September 30th, 2015, our electric department lost about $2 million. So, the reason for that was, is mainly back to issues like this.
That month there, too.
So, yeah. So, there's a perfect example. So, in this one single month, we ended up paying TVA 8.4 million, almost $8.5 million for our peak. If we hadn't had those three cold days, if those three or... well, actually, four cold days had been closer to normal, we would have paid $6.2 million to TVA. So, what happens is that we have a low, it was a very mild November in 2015. And so, we're not able to generate from those kilowatt-hours that we charge the customer, we're asking for the 2.24 cents increase. We're not able to have enough of those to make up for that $2 million right there. So, like we said, we pay 85 cents on every dollar back to TVA. Actually, in 2015, it was almost 87 cents on every dollar that we returned. So, we're running on a less than 14% margin. And then, from that 14% margin, that's what we have to pay all our employees for, you know... and then we have to pay all the O&M costs for the system. That's how we pay for those trucks and all that other... And then, also, we... And then also, we, our third largest category after our payment to TBA. So usually, our largest category after our TBA payment is for our employees, which is about 40, 45%. The next largest category is capital, which is about 20%. And then our third category is our payment in lieu of taxes to the city of Huntsville, which runs about seven, six to seven percent. Does that help?
Yeah, and so last night I was at a banquet and the football coach was giving a speech. He said, "Control the controllables." Can you control the weather or how can y'all help do that?
So, no, sir, we can't control the weather. And so that is why we came to you back in April. And that's, that is why we put all that into the availability charge. Because when we add money to the availability charge, I know exactly how much we're going to get because I know how many customers we have and I know we're growing about 2% a year. So, you know, my, my margin of error on that's fairly small. When we are putting that on to the usage, my margin of error gets very big. So, I don't know. So in January of 2014, we had an extremely cold January. Are we going to have a January like that?
No.
Exactly. So we started that way. We had one really cold weekend. We had about three or four days in January. So that's why Tony was saying, we're going to, we're afraid we're going to see another one of these, these kind of months. And then it's been, you know, 60 degrees every day, which is great. I mean, you know, nobody likes it to be 10 degrees outside, but that is not, the more months that we have that, where we have that one extreme cold or one extreme hot peak in a month, that makes it very difficult for us to recapture the revenue that we need to capture to keep our business running the way we should.
And that's why I've told you this before. I think you have a very strange business because you don't control the revenue you generate. You really are leaving it up to the weather to decide?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think that's very hard. So we can't tell you to go out and make more money or go make more sales or y'all work harder?
That's, that's true. We do the best we can. We try to come up with ways, like, like Tony was talking about, our peak shaving, so that helps. But they're, we're talking about this big capture and we're able to do this much with it, so.
Okay.
But we do the best we can, sorry.
And switching gears, who audits your books now?
So our audit is done, we have a different firm audit every other year because of the way that our charter was set up, that we can't have the same firm audit every year. So in 2015, Car Rigs in Ingram was the auditor that we used. And then this year, it was Jackson Thornton was the firm that we use. So we try to use firms that have some experience and are familiar with the electric and utility industries and also have some, so TBA requires us to account for things a little bit differently than GAAP procedures. And so it's always good for them to understand those so that we're not having to educate them on those when they come in. So I think this was the third year that we had used Jackson Thornton there on our even year cycle and then we use Car Rigs in Ingram on our odd year cycle.
And it's my fault. I have not read these audits for the few years and can't remember. Did you receive any kind of warnings to management or any kind of significant factors we need to know about or the public needs to know about?
No, sir. So in fact, we just received our audit for the 2016 year. We had no recommendations from the external auditors. We had no accounting adjustments that needed to be made and we had no prior period adjustments. In 2015, we also had no recommendations. So we had two years of very clean audits and I'm very proud of my staff for that.
Yeah, congratulations. Are those audits public?
Yes, they are.
And how would a citizen get one if they wanted to look at it?
So I think we post those on our website.
That's correct.
And also, they can always contact me and I can get them.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Russell, thank you. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to digress for a minute, I think we, the city, are in kind of the same boat that you guys are. Our largest revenue generator, of course, being the sales tax, which we can't control. I wish we could, but we can't. And overall, you guys are doing an impeccable job. Mr. Oshewski, the lady that you have put me in touch with, Ms. Torres, Kim Torres, has always been helpful when, Mr. Keith, we have a need that is warranted. In essence, they meet the criteria that we have established at Community Action Partnership in terms of either the age or family with young children, elderly, that kind of thing. And you all are doing exceedingly well. I think I'm going to do more with this project share personally, myself. Just a couple of quick questions for clarification. And some of these questions are coming to me from some of my constituents. So Ms. Janice Capshaw, is that right? So Ms. Capshaw, aside from, and I got it, we understand the merit-based performances and the steps and the 10 years. Let's go to your non-merited employees, your leaders and executives.
Yes.
Are they receiving any additional compensation?
No, no. They have a salary structure similar to our exempt where they get a merit increase once a year.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so kindly.
You're welcome.
I thought you had answered that very thoroughly. Also, and this is a question that I'm relaying to Huntsville Utilities, it's of a different nature. And if you need to get back with me on this, it's fine. But the question is, did you have a contract with Bayer Construction to put in the fiber? And if so, what happened? And the B part to that is, are we hiring their employees as temporary people working for us now who used to work for Bayer?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll answer that. And Stacy, Stacy Cantrell, our VP of Engineering, she may want to help me. But yeah, Bayer was one of our contractors that was doing some distribution fiber installation, construction for us. And they had, they were the low bid and on the, when we bid the job out and all that type thing and met all the criteria. And so we, we went into contract with Bayer. Then it was brought to our attention that Bayer's Alabama Contractors License was not valid. And so what we did was, there was a cease and desist order. We stopped work and of course, went, started the process to rebid the job where was, the contract was void. During the interim, because we're, we're on a timeline and want to stay on schedule with our fiber and fiber construction, we did, we employed, how many, Stacy? With about 40 employees that had worked with Bayer, the particular skills, say it, splicers, linemen, you know, that type thing, on a temporary basis so that we could continue construction. And we also leased some of their equipment, you know, some of their aerial units, bucket trucks, things like that, so as to, so as to keep working while this job is rebid.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Owens, and thank you, Ms. Capshaw. And just one quick question, maybe to the board, as it relates to this utility rate increase. And I know this is a rhetorical question, but did you all approve this unanimously or...
Yes, sir.
Okay. You did.
Mr. Moore? Could, could we have, just so we can have it on the record, could you go to the microphone?
My name is George Moore. I serve on the electric board with Ronnie Bowles and Thomas Winstead. We voted unanimously to ask for this rate increase. I think it's extremely well justified. We will do our very, very best to make every penny count for our city.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
And, excuse me, I think it was Mr. Russell had asked me a while ago, from April of 2011 to October of 2016, our load reduction, we had estimated savings of $20,693,000.
Thank you.
Very good. I also have a couple of questions. But let me first thank the Huntsville Utilities staff. You have done an exceptional job of keeping the public informed and not only making sure that they knew about the meetings, but then providing great information also to the council. I think we're probably better informed on this one than we even were last time. And also thank Mr. Bowles, Mr. Moore, and Dr. Houston for their work serving on the utilities board. We are grateful as a community for your service. My first question is to Ms. Capshaw. There have been a lot of questions, which actually have surprised me a little bit, about salary and compensation at Huntsville Utilities. And I guess the thought is that we're raising the rates to pay for inflated salaries. You mentioned your salary survey. Did your salaries, but you never said what the results were. Did the salary survey show that our rates are competitive, that they are not, or that they are in line with the other businesses that were compared?
On average, this year, they did show that we were pretty much in line or competitive. A few jobs were a little less and a few jobs a little more, but on the, on an average, yes, we were very competitive at this point.
But there were no egregious differences?
No.
That would concern the public?
No, and I think that's one of the reasons we do a survey every year, to make sure that we're keeping up with what's happening so we can make adjustments when we need to.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My second question, Ms. Owens, I think you can probably answer this. Last April, when we began looking at a rate increase, one of the points that was made was that Huntsville Utilities needs sustainable, steady funding because of the issues we've talked about, the variability of the weather. And so the focus in that rate increase was on the availability charge. This plan only increases the availability charge by a, just by a fraction, by 29 cents. And the burden of the rate is largely on the usage. Why that difference now? Your goal is sustainable, steady funding. That was why I voted for the original plan, because that's what you needed to do, the work you needed to do. Will this plan meet your needs?
Yes, the, our proposal will, will take care of our needs. And I think Ted, Mr. Phillips mentioned it a while ago, we anticipate some rate changes, our rate structure changes with TBA in October, really probably the next two Octobers. And I think, I think what you'll see coming from us over the next couple of years will be a, somewhat of a structure change to reflect that. We, we first need to figure out and see which way TBA's going because obviously, that's where we buy our power from. But what we're proposing to you will work for us and it'll fund our operation, our maintenance, our capital projects and things, but it is more weather dependent. And what we proposed in April was, was just a rate that took the weather variable out of it for us. And because I think, as Mr. Phillips mentioned, you know, that's a, that's a variable that we don't know, you know? And, and we can't do anything about it. But, but this rate proposal that, that we have before you will generate the revenue that we need to, to, you know, for our O&amp;M and the company. But, but I do think in the future, the slide, if you want to, can you go back to the slide with the load, showing the load curve on it? I see, you passed it. This, the slide that we looked at a minute ago showing how, you know, the peak during the course of a month and how we have to, we're charged for that peak from TBA. Plus, as I mentioned, we're charged for the kilowatt hours that, that we use during the course of the month. What, what causes this peak typically is residential load. And when, in the mornings, people getting up to go to work and things of that nature and stuff. And that's generally what causes the peak. Your commercial and your industrial loads are somewhat constant, you know, around the clock and things of that nature. But the, the residential load is typically what causes this. Or in our case, every system is a little different depending on how much industry you have in the community, what we call a load profile. And so this thing is caused by residential and that's fine, but residential, commercial, industrial, we have a demand charge. But on residential, we do not. And so that's why we were applying some of, an increase in the availability on residential to try to offset this peak charge. So I think you'll, in rate structures and increases in the future, we're going to have to go that way into that profile, you know, to, to cover the cost.
Now, you indicated that you'd be coming back in 18 to 24 months with another rate. Will that?
Probably.
Will that be, include the adjustments to your structure as a result of the TV, changes at TBA?
Yes, yes, yes.
One of the questions that we asked last time that didn't get answered was, do you have a Plan B? I think we were looking for options. And I think actually, that night, we tried to create options here at the council table, which doesn't work well.
This was not a place to negotiate.
Right, but well, TBA, TBA needed to approve anything and it did just, that didn't work. But certainly some suggestions were made and you considered those suggestions. Do you have options that could be considered besides the plan that has been presented?
Yes, ma'am, we, we do. We have an alternative rate proposal, which is basically, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It was 2.5% across, across all rate classes and a $2 increase on residential and small commercial availability charges. The $2 increase would, would be a small step in stabilizing our, our revenue and taking a little of the weather variable out of it. The thing about it is that is not the signal or the message that we heard from the council when we made the proposal back in April. And so that's why this, this is an alternative, but it's not what we're proposing.
But it would be acceptable to TBA and it is something that the council?
Yes, ma'am. It is. In fact, this, this particular proposal has also been approved by TBA.
So this would, what would be the availability charge then on this?
It's currently $8.88. This would be a $2 increase, which would take it to $10.88.
But that would, again...
But it's, it's only a 2.5% increase on the kilowatt hours, on the commodity. So there would be less of an increase there. Both our proposals and Ted might, Ted might can speak to it, generate about the same amount of revenue for us. But, but what they do is the alternate actually takes a little of the weather variable out of it for us.
So it becomes a little more level funding for you?
Yes, it's a little more stable.
Madam President?
I think those are all the questions I have. Mr. Kling?
Which?
Mr. Kling, and then Mr. Keith.
I think what you have brought is, you know, a better, a better proposal than what you had last time. We're up here and we deal with memos, we deal with budgets and meetings and stuff, but out there, you know, the bottom line is, we're in a people business. And I think there was concerns that was, was expressed by the city council about the low income and elderly and about the impact that a 50% access fee increase was going to have on them where they would be paying the same amount as, dollar wise, as the person who lives in the 10,000 square foot house up on the, up on the top, top of the mountain. And, you know, I was concerned that we had. I think you all have heard from us and I think you've heard from the public and this is certainly a more responsive proposal that you brought to us. I know it's not the easiest thing for you to manage if it, if it passes compared to other proposals that you had. But we, you know, have to be, you know, listening to the public out there and the concerns, especially those whose, whose voice we really need to hear from most of all. And I think we've gone through a process, it's like making sausage, it's not pretty, but I think what we have, it looks like it's going to be a much better product for us to, to consider next week.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Keith?
Hello, Ms. Stone.
Okay.
And I want to say this because I wasn't hearing the first proposal. And I do want to say hats off to Huntsville Utility, the board for being prolific. I know I've been in that office a number of times just trying to understand this. And hopefully I can get an understanding as well, because let me just say that in And hopefully I can get an understanding as well, because let me just say to an elephant in the room, nobody wants to pay more, including myself.
That's true.
No matter the constituent, no matter how much money people make, nobody wants to increase the amount that they paid Huntsville Utilities. And if you would have passed the May-October 2016 proposal, in your professional opinion, do you think you would still be coming back in 18 to 24 months?
Uh, no, I, I don't think so. Ted, you want to, Ted may want to comment on it. I, I think rate, rate changes, local rate adjustments, rate changes, rate structure is going to have to change.
Right.
Because of who we purchase our power from. And it's not just, I'm not throwing TVA under the bus. This is, it's universal. You know, it's, it's anywhere and any local power company that purchases power is dealing with this thing and this peak, these two charges. You've got a demand charge and, and you've got a commodity charge. So we're having, we're going to have, all power companies are going to have to change their structure, you know, to hold us net neutral, you know, on something like that. Now, if the $4, and basically it was $4.90 applied to the availability over a six-month period is what the proposal was in April. And if that had been approved, I think it would have probably, and I don't know, it probably held us off for maybe three years or something like that. And again, I, that's difficult to answer because I still do not know, we do not know which direction TVA is going to move with their rate structuring in October. So it, but, but I think, Ted, you, you want to comment?
So, yeah, I'll kind of piggyback on what Tony said. So my, my answer would be maybe, which is not much help, but not knowing what TVA's going to do the next two Octobers with, with, we know that, that there's going to be change. We just don't know what that change is going to be. So, so I, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying, no, we wouldn't have, we won't, wouldn't have come back to you, but I do think that we probably could have pushed it out another year to 18 months.
Yeah.
Got you. And I guess my, I'm adding a statement to this. 2002 to 2011, this isn't a political position. Nobody wants to raise taxes. The list goes on. It's an understanding of that. You want to have a 5.0 vote. Going from 2016 to proposing something else again in 2018 is just a very short turnaround. And I just would hope that you guys would be more, you know, as prolific as you was on this one, but considering that as much of, though it's not, you know, it's like medicine, you know, you don't, you don't want to take it, but you love the effects. If we can find a rate structure, maybe it's availability of some sort, because this right here obviously isn't the answer to all our issues, and we have a lot to look forward to. We would rather have a gap, as anybody would, in proposing one rate increase.
Yeah.
And then coming back again inside of, you know, almost two, two, three years. And if that proposal is tough, and maybe, I know we're shooting for 5.0 votes, the thing is about doing what is right by the community, in my argument. And it is tough to look at this proposal and hear, you know, I've been to so many homes about this proposal, but then to come back in potentially 18 months and do the same turnaround. So I just want you to consider that moving forward. I know you guys have a tough job and...
Well, and, and we are, and we're going to do anything and everything we can to, to, to put that off as long as we can. We, we don't like a rate increase either. We know how difficult that is. Something that, that, and we continuously look at ways. I know AMI metering is, is kind of controversial at times and things like that, but in our, in our capital plan, it's our, it's our goal, you know, to implement smart meters and that type thing, but, but what that will do is it will allow the consumer, the customer, to be more aware of how much power, our water, our gas, you know, that they're using, and it'll allow us to offer some incentives, like off-peak energy use. We can have a rate structure that, that allows a customer, if they're aware of it, and we've got the technology to, that they can see it and that kind of thing. We'll have a rate structure for on-peak and off-peak, and obviously the off-peak use would be much, much cheaper. And a lot of systems do that. It, it allows the customer to, you know, take care of, you know, their, their utilization of their electrical needs and, and things like that at off-peak hours at a tremendous savings.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's just one thing that we're looking at. We're also looking at different things like cogeneration and some generation and stuff behind the meters and, and that type thing, to try to keep that peak down. That is, that's what, that's, that's what's one of our tremendous expenses.
And again, I just want to reiterate, I mean, no, I absolutely understand, but I think we just have to understand the importance of disposition is yours, is to be objective. And though we want a 5.0 vote, more importantly, we want a structured system that is sustainable, and we don't have to keep coming back every two years just to get a 5.0 vote.
Sure.
To keep some level of rating. We want to have a sustainable, most efficient Georgetown accredited, whatever system, and whatever that takes to get there is what we should look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
What, one more question to follow up on, on Mr. Keith's question regarding coming back. Would Plan B, with Plan B, would you come back in 18 to 24 months?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're, we're looking at small increases more frequently.
More frequently.
This is the model that we're just working with right now. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions, comments from the council? We don't normally have public comments at work sessions, but this issue is important enough that we will permit them tonight. So if you would like to make any comments or have questions regarding what you've heard tonight, you may come to the microphone, please state your name, address, and share your comments with us.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Daniel Tate, 6500 Walden Run, 35806, and I'm here representing Energy Alabama. Just wanted to thank the council and also Huntsville Utilities for the opportunity here to, to comment. We wanted to alert the, the council to just some things that we have been working through internally as well. Starting this process before, we asked Huntsville Utilities for a copy of the cost of service study. We were able to obtain that through an Open Records Act request. We also believe in low-cost, reliable energy, and from what we can tell, as you guys have mentioned today, the proposal that we see, from the information that we've seen, is, is much better than the original proposal because it retains the tiers for conservation and things of that nature. We also believe in serving the community and, and doing that in such a way that when we have to have a rate increase, we can do things to help offset that rate increase as best we can for folks with fixed and low income. And so as a result of that, we actually took some of the questions, some of the answers that we asked Huntsville Utilities through the Open Records Act request, and had some external experts look at that. We will be providing those recommendations and those findings to the council and also to Huntsville Utilities here in the next few days. But since we had the work session and an opportunity to comment, I wanted to just kind of give a summary of some of the things that we had, had looked at. One of the questions that we had asked of Huntsville Utilities was around the performance of the energy efficiency programs that they do offer in terms of how much energy is actually being saved, adjusted for weather, so we can actually determine whether or not these programs are effective in terms of who is using them, and that information was not available. So one of our recommendations to city council would be to request this data so we can see whether or not these programs are effective. Another best practice that we found throughout the country was that about, a lot of utilities and other regulators, like state public service commissions and things of this nature, require utilities to spend approximately 0.2% of gross residential operating revenue specifically on low-income energy efficiency programs. For Huntsville Utilities, based on their disclosed revenue in the audited statements, that's going to be about $518,000 per year. Clearly, what they have done with the Huntsville Extreme Energy Makeover would well exceed the $518,000 per year. One of the recommendations we would have for a city council would be what happens after the Extreme Energy Makeover program is gone? Possibly we win the Georgetown University Energy Prize, and if there would be a way to get a commitment from Huntsville Utilities that, you know, pending the end of the Extreme Energy Makeover, maybe an award, maybe not, how do we handle that to make sure that there's still a, a program or offerings in place that can provide these services to folks on fixed and low-income services? And lastly, I just had kind of a comment and/or question, and that was around, we heard a lot of great comments, especially the first night when we had the public input session, and this place was absolutely packed out on National Championship Game Night, and I thought that was really good to see that the community cared enough to come out that night. And I just wanted, just looking forward to or wondering how all the comments that the public had and the questions that the public had will actually be used and incorporated? Will the proposed actions change any based on the public input that we have heard to this point? So that's all that I have, and once again, thanks to the council and thanks to Huntsville Utilities for the opportunity to comment and, and review the documentation.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Huntsville Utilities has answered the questions I think they heard that night, but this question is, so how, how is it going to change? Has it changed the recommendation at all, or has it changed the questions that you heard at the public hearing? Have they changed the recommendation, or are they changing the way you're doing business?
Much of what we heard at, at our public hearing was people don't want an increase, and we know that. As you heard Mr. Owens say, that's something we avoid whenever we can, however we can. And so the comments that it hurts the people that struggle the most to get by, we're very well aware of that. And so based on the constraints of our contract with TVA and how we can set up our rates, particularly for those customers that need that help, we have to get really creative. The, the HEM program was a grant opportunity for us to figure it out, and we're committed to a long-term solution to that. Now, understanding that any advice that we get for a program like that, our whole customer base bears that burden. So if we have the support of our customers on an opportunity like that, then certainly we would look very hard at that. And, and so we believe going forward, we will have that, but after HEM, we're just not sure yet. We're looking at a lot of different possibilities. Georgetown certainly weighs in. That would be a wonderful opportunity for the city to help us keep going at a lesser level, but gives us more time to figure it out. But rest assured, we are working on that very hard.
And then in addition to that, the, the concerns that were expressed about the impact on low-income families are addressed by the proposal itself.
Correct. That is with that input considered. That was a lot of what we heard back in the spring of last year. And, you know, it's, it's tricky because, you know, we still have that weather variable, and if we were to suddenly get very cold, then those folks that are struggling to pay all their bills will be hit the hardest, and that's a, that is a factor that we have absolutely no control over.
Thank you.
Let me help with one thing, too. This is little, but every little bit, every little bit counts. When we, when I got into the job, every person that was having problems paying their bill in the, at the 14-day mark, they had to drive down to Huntsville Utilities, come in and see one of my clerks to get a 12-day, a 14-day extension. And we, we did it automatic. So I, I found out about this, and I said, come on, guys, what are we doing? We're making somebody drive all the way down for, drive down, so $5, $3 gas price, time off from work, time off from duty, whatever they're doing, all those factors that we have a tendency to forget about. And so we did a program in our world, it's called Dunning. Took six months for us with our computer guys to figure it all out, and the 12 days is automatically added in. So now those great Americans that are having trouble paying their bill, they don't have to drive all the way down. They have to take the time, and you say, well, well, you know what? We're sitting here fussing about $2.50 or 2.75, which could be $4. Well, we just saved a tank of gas for that gentleman or that great American lady to come in and do that. So I'm just sharing with you, we, that's just one case, okay? I can give you another one to just general folks. There are low-income folks that have good credit scores. They're just at that point in their life where that there's, the money's not the same. You want to, and you move from one apartment into another apartment now, and you, and you, you used to have to drive down to see us, show your edge, all your stuff. Now you can go on to the internet, because low-income people still have iPhones, they still know how to do all that, and they punch in their stuff, and if their credit score's good, instead of a $300 deposit, it's a $100 deposit. So I'll share with you that we used to have so many people answering the phones down there. You'd probably have to wait on a phone while they're at work, while they're not getting paid, or they have to do something. Our rate now is 90, 90% of the calls are calling where they're answering one minute. When I got there, it was 40, 40 sec, 40%. Okay, what's that mean? That means that young man or young lady or old man or old lady that are having trouble paying their bill have gotten now more time to work to pay their bill because they're not having to deal with us so much. So I say all that to say, there's a million things we can still do, and we're looking at it, but I just want you to know, there's a whole lot of things we are doing to change, and I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Olszewski. Singal.
Ruchi Singhhal, Nine Braywick Place, girly. Thank you, council, for allowing us to talk. I know this isn't normal, so I appreciate that. And thank you Huntsville Utilities for being so available with answers, and I think this is the first step, or hopefully first of many steps, where we can work together and offer solutions. I think the chart with the peak is, of course, the crux of the problem, right? You add a bunch of $2 millions together, you get a big, a lot of money that Huntsville Utilities has to pay. So I think that's the issue we want to help address. What my question is, is, and I don't know if it's Colonel Olszewski or anybody else who's looking at the data, what have been the results with HEM? So my question is, have you looked at the homes that are, have gone through the process? The more homes that help you not get that peak will help you not have to pay that $2 million. I know that in 2014, during that polar vortex that was mentioned earlier, the crisis line was being called. 70% of the calls to the crisis line were about high utility bills. Huntsville Utilities recognized that issue and definitely engaged, but people were having $500 bills as opposed to $100 bills. That's five times their normal utility bill, which of course leads to that whole peak situation. So that's my first question. And the second question is, I propose that we, or I ask the council if there's a way that we can work together to recreate Project Share in a way that helps do exactly what Mr. Tate was talking about with continuing HEM. Nobody can guarantee whether TVA is going to keep funding it. I'm sure you guys are wondering that as well, but you're very committed to it and you're appreciating the results. Is there a way that we can motivate the public to donate for that so that it's not for bill pay, but it's actually for energy efficiency work? And Nexus Energy Center would be more than willing to help in any capacity to make that happen.
I'll answer the second question first.
Let me, let me just review them to make sure we've got them all. You're asking first about the results of the HEM project. Secondly, about the impact on those efforts that they potentially could have on the peak usage, and then recreating Project Share to continue HEM rather than having the focus be on help assistance with bill pay. Okay, three questions. Mr. Olszewski?
Can you repeat the question again?
Results with, results with the HEM?
I'm just messing with you, man. I've seen that on TV. First of all, the first home we did in HEM was in September, August, September-ish of, of '15. So we are now just getting our first homes in that timeframe. And I'll share with you, the answer is, I don't have the kind of data you want, but I don't have the kind of data I want yet, because most of the homes we did upfront, believe it or not, wore Huntsville Housing Authority homes, which are a part of this game as well. And the only reason, one of the reasons we were able to get 11.7 million in when Jay Stowe signed up us for it, because we went and asked him to, was because the only way we could get to that number owner occupied at 20 years old was to get to 1,100 homes was to open up Huntsville Housing Authority. So as far, and we get to say this tonight, but for Councilman Keith's benefit, five to six million of the eight million we spent has been in his district, so, which is the one that's hit the hardest by low income. So I don't have the data you and I want yet, but we're getting there. But I'll share with you, I had got enough data to come to the meeting that night, and I'm sorry, I don't have it with me right now, but we had a myriad of homes that we had $110 bills the first time they had it, that were now $50 bills. But I also will tell you, we had some homes that didn't have a bill because their HVAC you, we had some homes that didn't have a bill because their HVAC didn't even work, that now are using energy and paying a bill. So, the numbers are skewed in certain respects. But I owe it to you. I owe it to me. I owe it to my board. I owe it to everybody to do this. We don't think we're in a zone yet to do. We think we need another couple of months to be able to get the pool that we're looking at. That was the first question. So, yeah, I owe it to you. I owe it to, I owe it to my own self. I mean, we need to figure out how to better.
Second question is, would those sort of energy efforts, if it was ongoing?
Yes.
Would they impact peak usage?
Okay. Back to Tony's point, the answer's yes. But I don't want to shock anybody. 1,100 homes of 18, 180,000 homes is not going to make a major dent. We need about 20,000 homes. Okay, you want to help me with that, Ted?
So, it doesn't matter how efficient your system is? When it's 24 degrees outside, your heat's going to be running? If you have, you have an old system that's inefficient, it's going to be running more? But even if you have a very efficient system that's brand-new, when it's the coldest hour of the morning, more likely than not, it's going to be running. So, it is difficult to shave a whole lot of that peak off by having more efficient appliances. What happens is that that bottom line drops down a little bit because all during the rest of the month, they're using a little bit less. But when it's at 24 degrees, people's heat's going to be running, whether they got a brand-new system that's the highest steer rating that they can have, or they've got a 27-year-old system that's just barely getting by. So, I wanted, I wanted to address that.
And that's, I can follow up on that. We had a great American standing over there the other night that had a $44 bill, and she had a $120 bill. And I said, "Give me your card. I'll give you my card, and I'll help you figure it out." Her bill was right. It wasn't a meter-reader issue. It wasn't anything. It just so happens that it was cold, and it was real cold. And so, I know you know, and I know you know about this thing called heat strips. And all you got to do is look at your gauge. When heat strips are kicking in, you can, you can count on that the dollars are going click, 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 click. So, if I was, if I really, and I'm working on this, it's a TVA on new homes. I can't get there on old homes yet. But we're working on TVA's new home program. We believe is going to go dual fuel, and they're going to give some benefits on dual fuel. We believe that because that guy that goes on, that's my guy Larry Denman. We believe that's going to help. But I need 20,000, 30,000 homes, and I don't need the weather to go to 24 degrees to help that. And the third question is, Project Share?
Could Project Share be recreated so that Project Share funds go to continue the HEEM program rather than to assistance with bill pay?
Whew. The answer is, yeah, let me, let me take this on, and I'll let you, Ted. The answer is, we're willing to look at anything. My real goal would be to quadruple, fivetuple, tentuple, the 2% we're getting, and get that to be, instead of the money it is, get that to be a million dollars that we're giving in this great community of $84,000 average salaries instead of $6.57. So, I'll leave it at that. You got anything?
So, one other issue with the, with the HEEM project, and one of the problems that this may cause is the fact that it's owner-occupied. So, a lot of the people that were helping with our Project Share now are, don't actually own the property that they live in. And so, if we were shifting those funds, we would be, you know, there's a good percentage of our customer base that, that would no longer be getting help because they don't actually own the property they live in. So, that would be my first concern about that, Ruchi. You know, that we're...
There's a need for both.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment?
Reginald McKenzie, 3708 Fox Trail Circle, Huntsville, 35810. Like to thank the council and also Huntsville Utilities, my good friend George Moore. We served on the hospital board together. So, I know that I trust what you all are presenting. Because of him, I've served with him, and I know his integrity is above, beyond approach. So, but I like, I do have some questions because he know me, trusts, but also verifies. And that's what we do. The council, I know Councilman McLean, you mentioned about the, I guess the community not being here. But, you know, I think the community expect each one of you to dig into, you know, the information that you're receiving and do your best in representing your constituents and making the best decision that you can based on the information that you have. But I have a few questions, and I try to be quick with these. And I don't know, I make and ask them, and then sit down and just listen. But the first question is on the bond rating. What was the bond rating prior to that vote? So, if you had a B rating before the vote, you know, so that's one question, double B or whatever it was. The other question is, this fiber network, how much did that cost Huntsville Utilities? And also, when would it be implemented? And the other thing is, how would that, I know you say you're going to lease to Google or whoever, but that's, would that cost be passed along to the customers? You know, I'm sure, so, you know, it's a couple of, it's kind of a web, I guess. You know, the city raised our taxes a year or so ago. Now, utility is going to be raised. I'm sure Huntsville Hospital raised things that we don't know about. So, all these entities are raising prices for the customers that, you know, adds up. You know, it's not just one thing. So, we have to keep that in mind. But that's the question. And how much money you all expect to generate from leasing that fiber? And will there be a, also a follow-on to that, will there be opt-out for customers? For instance, a customer living in a certain area, if they don't want to use the fiber, can they opt out? Or they just going to have to pay the rate? Is this going to be one standard rate? Or they have to opt in? I don't know which one that would be. The other one is, do the city, how much money do the city receive from Huntsville Utilities? That's a question for, for the council. And, oh, one, one other question, and it's kind of, I've made three or four phone calls. I own a small business, a restaurant on North Parkway, and I've called Huntsville Utilities. And I normally don't, especially in this public meeting, but three or four times. And seem like the lights where my business is, all down, where you turn off Max Luthor, those lights are normally out on the rest. So, I have to use my lights mostly in my restaurant outside to get the lighting that I need for my customers. So, I made some calls, and those lights are, so hopefully that can be corrected in the very near future. And it seems to happen quite a bit. And I've noticed the other lights down Park, Parkway, on down, and on down south, and on up. Those lights always working. But those lights, you know, right there in that little area are normally out. So, if y'all can check on that for me. And I'll sit down and listen to the response.
You ask a number of questions about fiber, but only one, I think, about the rate increase. But we can answer all of them. The first was with regard to the bond rating prior to the vote. It was AA+ was it not?
Yes, ma'am. It was a AA+, and they downgraded it to a AA.
So, we went from AA+ to AA?
AA, okay.
Fiber network cost, and then there was a question with when it would be implemented? It, the rate increase, the rate increase or the fiber?
The fiber.
Okay.
Yeah, I know when they say the rating.
Cost of the fiber network, when will it be implemented? Will the cost of the fiber be passed along? And how much will be generated from the lease of the fiber?
Okay, I'll try to address those. So, the cost of the project, we estimate to be about $60 million. We anticipate that project being complete in September of 19?
That's right.
Okay. So, but as areas within the city are, the fiber is installed, then Google will go ahead and start signing up subscribers to that system. So, no customer will be paying for any part of that fiber. So, if you want to sign up with Google Fiber or other tenants that we add later on, that's between you and them. So, we get our money, our lease agreement with, with Google is for 20 years, and it's for, we receive $5 for every home passed. Not every home, you know, it doesn't matter if they sign up for the fiber or not. It's every home passed. So, that contract is, is for, like I said, 20 years, and the revenue on that will be about $7.5 million a year with our current population. As our population grows, that'll be more $5 for us. So, but in our models, we try to be very conservative. And so, but you can see the payback just from Google, the payback that $60 million is less than 10 years if they're paying a $7.5 million a year.
Okay. Probably the most important question that was asked, and it's already been answered a couple of times, but let's answer it again. Will the cost of, is this rate increase going to pay for the cost of fiber? Or will the cost of fiber be passed along and paid with the rate increase?
No, ma'am. It'll be paid by the tenants.
Be very, very clear on that.
Yes.
That there, a model's been put together that, that pays for fiber.
I think there was a question about how much money did Huntsville Utilities pay to the city?
I think it was, yes.
Yeah, that was the one.
So, I've got here, this is for fiscal year 2015. Electric paid 11.8, gas paid 2.6 million, and water paid 1.2 million. So, in total, it was 16.7 million. And then, in FY16, the year we just finished, electric paid 11.4 million, gas paid 2.1 million, water paid 2.4 million. So, we were just shy of $16 million for FY16. So, I'll take just, if you don't mind, I'll take just a second to explain how we figure what we pay y'all. So, for gas and water, it's based upon how much revenue we receive. So, FY16, we had a fairly, well, we had a very dry summer, and so, we did see an increase in our water usage. And so, that in turn meant passing on more money to you. In natural gas, the number was down a little bit because we had a very mild winter in FY16. So, that was a little less to y'all. And then, the electric is figured a little bit differently. It is based upon the book value of our fixed assets. So, as we increase our, the size of our system and do some of these capital projects, that will increase the book value of our assets, which will in turn increase the amount of payment that we make to y'all every year.
And that's the payment in lieu of taxes?
Yes, ma'am. That's the payment in lieu of taxes. Did I get them all?
Thank you. I believe that...
I think that was all of them. And that, and just, and in closing, just say that the council, like I say, we entrust you all to dig deep into the situations and make sure that these entities, these boards are doing what they're supposed to do with the money. You know, I, like I said, nobody want a price increase. You know, my, my small business restaurant, I complain every time I go down there, but I just pay the money, you know. But I know we have to pay for utilities. But at the same time, we want Huntsville Utilities to be through to with the money and not just, you know, like I said, people ask why you do the fiber and not let Google do it. And I'm sure y'all had a reason for that, and probably helped you generate more money. But at the same time, we don't want to, you know, the city raise the taxes, and all these boards raise these different prices on the customer. And, you know, we say two-point, but, you know, you start adding it up, you know, rates go up for us $50 a year when you put it all together. So, we want everybody to be, you know, responsible in what you do with these public funds and make sure you're using them appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Ms. Reed?
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good.
I was at school board meeting, so I've seen the presentation. I want to thank the utilities for all the time that they've put into this. I, I don't know if I misheard or heard that we, the people, are not paying for any of that fiber that's going to be installed in this city. That's not our debt. Is that true? I didn't, I didn't know if I got that right.
I believe that's correct.
Who's going to put up the, fund the bill up front? Are they going to get bond money, or how are they going to pay for it up front?
So, we're paying for it up front with reserves we already have. And then, in the electric department, and then as the fiber department starts generating revenue from the tenants, then we will repay back the electric department for that at the market, what a, what a market rate would be. So, that's, that's the way we put that financial plan together.
And smart meters? Are we spending any money yet, looking into smart meters?
Yes, ma'am. And I think maybe somebody else would be better.
Well, that's okay. I think it's $60 million, too. You don't have to answer that stuff. But will we be paying for that, too? And then, there's dual, dual cost that somebody said if we installed that, maybe that would be cheaper. I mean, every time we install something, it's a little bit.
So, your, your first question, are we installing smart meters?
Smart meters.
We currently are in the process of implementing a pilot where we have approximately 200 meters of electric, water, and gas. And that, we're going to run a pilot on and test the operation of it and things like that. It's, it's our plan, you know, over the next few years to implement smart meters in electric, water, and gas. But we still, we're still not there yet.
Will the public be paying for some of that, too?
Well, yeah. I mean, that's part of our, yes.
I know. Y'all need the money. They pass it, and you got to get the money to pay for it.
That's part of our capital plan, yes, ma'am.
Hey, it starts up there. Thank you. Anyway, I got a problem when he said a while ago, there are people not owning their own homes anymore. I can tell you now, the real estate business and people owning their own homes is going kaput because all these mixed-use properties that they're putting in on these apartments and complexes and mixed uses and buying land. We just bought land for a hotel, and there's Madison Square out there. It's going to put millions of dollars. Maybe they can answer questions about economic development up there. Who pays for all that utility and all that new development, all them houses and all that development, Madison Square Mall? This is economic development, which we bank on and look forward to, to help paying some of these bills. But that's extra costs somewhere somebody's going to have to pay for. So, when we buy the land up there from the council for the hotel at Madison Square Mall, who puts the money up when they start developing? And who pays for all this stuff? I guess that's my big question.
It's the city versus the utilities.
Looking to see if we have Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Hamilton left. It's my understanding that the developers paid to construction when those projects take place. So, they invest in the infrastructure and are part of that process.
So, they put money up front. The developers puts money up to the utilities. And the public can go find...
I think Mr. Col...
And the public can go find out how much they put up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Reed, with that particular project, the city does not expend any funds until such time we get into Phase Two, which is the infrastructure, the roadways and things like that.
Why do we buy the land? Never mind. Don't mention that. I don't want to hear.
Ms. Reed, we really don't want to get into a debate on Mid-City. Do you have any other questions for the utilities with regard to the rate increase?
Well, if we bought the land, I thought we might help put them in business, is what I'm thinking.
Thank you for coming.
That's what we've been doing. That's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Do you have questions for the, any other questions for the utilities about the rate increase?
Who pays for all the infrastructure?
Well, developers. When we deal with developers, as far as utility infrastructure, electric, water, gas, the developers, they pay what's called an ATC, an Aid to Construction. And so, they cover like, say, a subdivision. Let's take water, for example. In a, in a subdivision, the developer comes in and puts in that water system at his cost by our design and our specifications, and then turns it over to us to operate. If, if it's an approach, what we call an approach main or something like that, then the developer pays for a cost of that water main to get it to his subdivision. So, their developer pays, pays for it.
May I ask one more question? Can the public come to a utility meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Without, without an appointment?
The board meetings?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry. Scott Hammond, 196 Jeff Road Northwest, Unit 102, Huntsville, Alabama, 35806.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't able to make it to the original public meeting, so I might be asking somewhat redundant questions. But one thing I, a couple, I, three main points, I guess, maybe. One is the fact that I am definitely interested in hoping that utilities and via TVA look... more, more into renewable energies in the sort, mainly not the fact of just, the fact that it's cleaner and all, but the fact that when I look at my utility bill, it states, you know, the rates are fairly low, and the usage is fairly, is relatively high. So I'm thinking, well, if the demand is high, then obviously to help offset that, we need more supply. And lately, with like solar and wind becoming much cheaper, the cheapest way to get more supply is through those methods, and I'm really hoping that they look more furthering into that kind of thing. And I understand that Huntsville Utilities can't generate their own power as contracted for TVA. I get that. But here's, and relating to the peak, to the peak demands and things like that, and the load shifting that you're talking about, reducing the voltage and all that kind of stuff, that's awesome, I love that you're doing that. I'm curious if y'all have looked into energy storage systems, using like giant batteries type things to generate, to store the power when it's low peak, you know, low demand from TVA. I understand TVA has like Raccoon Mountain, which is basically a giant battery, but instead of a battery, it's a lake on a mountain, and they pump it up at night and drain it in the day, things like that. So I understand that TVA gets that, and I'm, and that, they built that big system back in the 70s, and batteries were just, you know, very expensive and not really useful. Now they've improved so much lately, I'm wondering if that's an option that utilities can look into. And also just a little brief side note, also, I appreciate the city in various aspects, especially when it comes to the fact that you have promoted, in some ways, electric vehicle propulsion, things like that, that the quick charger y'all have out here, that was donated and was set up, I appreciate that so much. The fact that we had one, it broke, and you got a new one, I use it quite a lot when I'm doing a lot of driving with my electric car, and the thing with the utilities is that y'all have that plug-in pickup truck, that I, and I really think that's really cool, and I, I would like to see, I like to see how much that is, how much that's being utilized, and how much that is helping you reduce your overall usage of fuel and such, because I've been downtown several times, just for various things, and I've seen it, you know, plugged in, but in the, late in the day, obviously in the day, but like, sometimes I'll come in like middle of the day and it's still there, so I'm wondering if it's being used, or if it's, I just happen to not see it being used, I'm just, I just like that kind of thing. But my main thing is the, is the energy storage, if that's something that can help with the peak shifting and things of that sort.
Mr. Owens, would you like to address a question regarding energy storage?
Yeah, the battery technology has improved greatly, it sounds like you're probably aware of over the last few years, and that kind of thing. We work, we have a great relationship with TVA. They're obviously our power provider, and TVA has a lot of programs that they're continuously looking into, you know, whether it's solar or wind, battery, and you're right, Raccoon Mountain, of course, Raccoon Mountain's been in, it's been there for many years, but it's a great technology. And oddly enough, that is somewhat what we do, I just, I talked about the peak a while ago, that's what we do with our water system, you know, here in Huntsville. During off-peak times, we will, we've got, we've got 53 water tanks in the distribution system out there, we pump those tanks up and things of that nature, and then we take the plants and pump stations offline to curtail that peak as much as we possibly can. So, but, you know, battery technology, wind, solar, those are great things, and I think that technology, just personally, I think that technology will continue to improve over time, we'll be able to take advantage of that. But the bottom line is, right now, today, we still depend on the grid, and because those technologies are not to the point where you can, they're 100% reliable, or they're not quite as reliable as the grid. And the cost of that grid, the operation and the maintenance and things like that associated with the grid, there's fixed costs there, that, the grid, poles, transformers, things of that nature, those costs are there, whether we sell 1 kilowatt hour are $50 million. So that's the, that's the other struggle that we have. You know, you can, you can go down the street and here's a house, and family living in it, and they're using electricity, and then you got a house right beside it that's vacant, it costs us the same amount of money to put that infrastructure into those two locations. And so until that technology, battery technology wins over, until it improves, which I think it will, it will continue to improve, you know, we still, we still are going to have to rely on the grid, and so that's where we are. But we support that, we work closely with TVA in their programs, it's looking at that type thing, they've got a distributive energy program, a whole department that's dedicated to looking at alternatives. Natural gas, use natural gas for generation, actually at, I know the council is very aware of a water project that we currently have going on, we've got a 2-meg natural gas generator at a water plant, you know, so that we can run that plant on natural, utilizing natural gas, off-peak, you know, during, during operation. So, yeah, we, we're constantly looking at it.
I think most people are not aware of all Huntsville Utilities is doing to not only conserve energy, but to save resources and to work as efficiently as possible. Y'all are providing exceptional service and doing it with less and less all the time. So, thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to address or ask a question tonight?
Move to adjourn.
We are grateful for all of, to all of you for being here tonight, thank you again for the presentation, and we look forward to seeing you at the council meeting on the 26th.
Thank you.